convene an open session at 7:00 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the October 11, 2023 meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Please stand and join with me for a moment of silence and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Does anyone want to address the school committee tonight? Seeing, hearing none, we'll go to recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, I have some special announcements and some special recognitions to make. The first, I want to recognize Ms. Monica Rodriguez, who is a hospitality teacher from the Windsocket area career and technical center. She's been named the Teacher of the Year by the Rhode Island Hospitality Association, and Monica is here this evening. Ms. Rodriguez has been in the hospitality and tourism industry for more than 20 years. She has stated that an opportunity came up for her to return to her high school and teach students using her experiences, and that it was like coming full circle for her having graduated from Windsocket. Incidentally, Monica, many, many years ago, was a student of mine. So I'm so proud of her. I'm so proud of you and your accomplishments, Monica. Monica said that she loves being able to teach her passion to young minds that have yet to experience what the world has to offer them. Congratulations on this prestigious award. Thank you for all you do for your students. Thank you for all you do for the Career Center in this district, and thank you for all you do for this community, Monica. I have a special certificate. If you'd like to come up, I would love to present it to you.
Dr. McGee, we'll take a picture. Congratulations.
Next, I would like to announce, I'm honored to announce and to introduce Mr. Brian Ernest as the new principal of Windsocket High School and the Windsocket area career and technical center. Mr. Ernest has over 20 years of experience as an administrator at both the elementary and secondary levels. In 2021, Brian started his career with the Windsocket Education Department as assistant principal for the high school. Brian has served as the freshman academy assistant principal at the high school and has served as principal and assistant principal in New Hampshire. So I am thrilled and pleased to announce Mr. Brian Ernest as the new Windsocket High School, Windsocket area career and technical center principal. Congratulations. I am also very pleased to introduce Ms. Catherine Rickert as the new director of the Windsocket area career and technical center. Ms. Rickert comes to us from the Central Falls Public Schools, where she served as the coordinator for the CTE program. She was instrumental in building the CTE program in Central Falls. So she has great experience here. She's also served in the East Providence School District as a school-based career coordinator. Her experience spans more than a decade, and I'm very happy and very, very excited to welcome Catherine to the Windsocket area career and technical center. We've already been talking about a lot of ideas that she has with respect to CTE pathways, both at the Career Center and at the high school. And I'm just thrilled that Brian and Catherine are here this evening, and I'm just really thrilled about the administrative team that we're creating at the Career Center and the high school. So I want to welcome Catherine to the Windsocket Education Department. Next, I would like to recognize some other members of our Windsocket Education Department family that are here with us this evening. Through the collaboration between Rita Lemieux, who is a community member, Sherri Duran, founder of Anchors Up Rescue Group, and Roxanne Carey, founder of the Nathaniel T. Crane Sneaker Closet, and who was also a reading specialist at the Hamlet Middle School, they were able to secure a very generous donation of Bombas socks for all of the district's elementary and middle school students who are experiencing homelessness. Bombas socks were established in 2013, and the company's mission is to put quality socks on America's homeless population. The school district was fortunate enough to receive socks with a retail value of over $4,000. In addition to securing this donation, Roxanne has received many other donations from the generous staff she works with, friends, family, and outside agencies to keep the sneaker closet at the middle school open for all students. She's distributed hundreds of pairs of sneakers over the years, and getting the Bombas socks was an added bonus. Congratulations to Roxanne on a job well done for securing these donations year after year for our students. And again, I want to thank Roxanne. She goes above and beyond, and Robin goes above and beyond as well. And it's a pleasure and it's an honor to call them colleagues, and the work that they do for their students is just amazing. Our students are very, very lucky to have Roxanne and to have Robin looking out for them. So I want to just thank them. Thank you very much. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements and recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone have any comments for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the September 27, 2023 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the September 27, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do we have any changes, amendments to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Does anyone want to talk about any specific items in the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kepiscus.
I have just one question. There's a line item for legal services for fiscal year '24. Is that a lump sum payment, or is that an arrears, or what is that?
Can you repeat the question, Ms. Kepiscus? I didn't quite understand it. Which requisition are you referring to?
There's a payment for legal services for expenses, excuse me, for legal services with expenses, May and June of '23, and then there's legal services with expenses for fiscal year '24, which is a significant sum. Is that the whole year?
That's for the whole year. We received May and June late. Our attorneys were a little behind on their billing, so they got the bills in. We'll be paying the May and June off, and we're also creating at the same time a purchase order for the entire fiscal year to cover expenses for fiscal year '24.
But I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into communications, and I'll ask our student representative, Mr. Quson, to give us his report.
Thank you, Chairman Borger. For my report this week, I'm going to start off with recent events. I'm happy to report that our Novem football team is on a winning streak. They won their last home game against Central High School, and then they had a notable win this past Friday of 59 to 6 against Cranston East, which we are all very excited and proud of.
Wow.
Next, I'd like to bring light to our girls volleyball team, who held a mental health awareness game last, two Fridays ago, September 29th. The girls volleyball team created flyers promoting the game and encouraging the public to wear green to the game, which is the color for mental health awareness. At the game, the girls sold mental health awareness bracelets, and they had a donation bucket, which together raised over $700. They then took this money and donated it to the Chris Collins Foundation, which is a mental health education nonprofit based in Rhode Island. I was at the game, and all the players were decorated in green paint and accessories, and a majority of the crowd was wearing green, which was great to see. Mental health is a big topic for WHS. We're continuously trying to bring attention to it, especially through campaigns spearheaded by the peer mentors. This year, for the second year in a row, we have a new group of around 20 peer mentors taking part in the Chris Collins Foundation project. These students attended a full-day mental health training at URI, and now they are using their knowledge that they learned that day, along with a $500 grant from the Chris Collins Foundation, to create a new mental health awareness campaign in our school that will debut at the end of the year. Lastly, I'd like to shout out the WHS band, who performed in the On Fest Parade this past Monday. The band, despite facing much adversity over the past couple of weeks, was able to pull off a successful performance in the parade. This was due to the will and grit of all of our band members, help from parents and teachers, and especially the help from our previous band director, Mr. Christopher Depot, who stepped in to help make this possible for us. Next, under upcoming events, I'd like to formally invite all of you, members of the school committee and everyone in the Windsocket community, to our junior and senior class fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse in North Smithfield tomorrow night. You can come at any time between 3:00 and 10:00 PM, grab a bite to eat, and present our flyer to your waiter, and 10% of your meal cost will be donated back to our class to help fundraise for prom. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
That's great. Any questions? Mrs. Costa.
Do you have a copy of the flyers for tomorrow night by any chance?
I was going to print some. I don't have some, but I can get them to you, but there is a flyer attached on the dock in the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Good job.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the communications report from our student representative. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we'll ask you, Dr. McGee, to give us your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, I have personal matters update. I'd like to notify the committee that the Windsocket Education Department has hired a self-contained ESL teacher for Windsocket High School. This individual was a paraprofessional who has become a teacher, so we're excited to move her along the ranks in the Windsocket Education Department. We've hired two non-certified teacher assistant, PCA, which is a one-to-one, and a resource teacher assistant as well to our ranks here in Windsocket. Currently, we still have two administrative positions that we are looking to fill, one being the assistant principal position, which was formerly Mr. Ernest's position. However, we have made some changes to the administrative situation over at the high school in that Kate Clancy, Ms. Clancy, who was a 10-month administrator, we've moved her to a 12-month, and Ms. Clancy is going to take over for Mr. Ernest with respect to the freshman academy. So Kate's position, which is a 10-month position, will be advertised tomorrow. And in addition to that, Berning Heights, which we're hopeful that we will be interviewing a candidate hopefully next week. So we're getting closer. 16 teaching positions we have, and that's down by about four from the last committee meeting, and 37 paraprofessional positions, which is down slightly from the last meeting as well, and two clerical positions. So, you know, again, we're continuing to try to fill these positions as quickly as we can. It's been a challenge, but we're going to continue to do our very best to make sure that we have a teacher and a paraprofessional and an administrator in each of our buildings that are in need of them. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report this evening.
Any comments, questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports, and we'll begin with health and wellness, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa.
That's all you, Mr. Burke.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Costa. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee met on Monday, September 25th. It was our first meeting of the school year. Very well-intended, as our first meeting was. We approved our minutes for May 22nd. I welcomed everybody there since it was our first one, and also I welcomed and introduced Mr. Kyle Quatroz, who is our new director of social, emotional learning, mental health, and wellness. And it was great that he is now part of our subcommittee. So once again, welcome. Welcome to Kyle. We had several updates from many of the individuals that come to this meeting. First update was from Sedexo, and there were two things that we discussed with Sedexo. First of all, we looked at the summer program, and Ashley Plant, our director of Sedexo, explained to us that the summer program was very successful, particularly in the schools, because most of their work was done in the schools, because the students were there for the summer programs. They had one site in the city over at the Veterans Memorial Park, which was not as busy as it had been in the past, because most of our students were in the schools, taking advantage of the lunch program. We also discussed the new lunch policy program, and we hear nothing but great reviews for it. And this is the new program now that it's free lunch to everybody in the district, and most people really, really enjoy that part of the program. It's very successful from Sedexo's point of view. It's also been very successful, too. Next, there's also, Sedexo is also running, once a month, they're going to have a Rhode Island Local Day, where they're going to provide some food source from locally grown, so I guess everyone should look forward to that. Moving on, we next heard from the Rhode Island Healthy School Coalition. A major thing that they announced is that their yearly breakfast is going to be October 26th. There will be several members from the Windsocket community that will be attending that breakfast. They also talked about, there's going to be a farm-to-school program on November 9th, opened, I don't know where it is, but it's going to be opened, I think, virtually for people to sign up for. So she discussed that. Next, we heard from URI Snap Ed Program, and we've been pretty lucky in our district the last two years that we've had the Students Take Charge program put together by URI. We've had students in Harris School, 5th graders in Harris being part of it. Last year, we had Globe students, 5th grade students in Globe that were part of it. And next year, we already have plans for Citizens Pothier is going to be part of the Students Take Charge program. Normally, they begin in the fall, but this year, they're going to begin in January. So we'll see that come into Citizens Pothier School next January. We also had a discussion from Project Aware. We talked about the mental health mentors. We have 110 peer mentors right now that have been receiving some guidance. They've also been working with the Collins Group that was mentioned earlier. So once again, great things are happening with our peer mentors and our mental health mentors, once again, in the high school and moving now towards the middle school. And finally, the Windsocket Prevention Coalition made their presentation. Cheryl and Derek spoke to us about the Above the Influence program that is taking place in the high school. In fact, it started this afternoon, working with CCF. We work with CCF on this program. And also, they are having a trunk or treat program this Friday, October 13th, in the parking lot, which is behind Chan's and some of those buildings from Main Street. So that should be a successful program. I know there are 13 trucks that are going to be there, all decorated up, giving away candy. And finally, our next Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting will be November 20th. Mr. Chairman, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much for your report, Vice Chair Burke. Any questions for him? Mrs. Costa, do you have anything to add?
Nope. He covered it all.
Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the CILAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CILAC had its first meeting of the school year on October 5th, 2023, with our September meeting having been canceled due to the cancellation of after-school activities as a result of whether we decided to cancel to avoid confusion. Meeting was called to order at 6:03. We went through the typical introduction of everybody at the meeting to each other. There was no presentation, as it was the first meeting of the year, and that's typical, so we can review what happened over the summer. Under Old Business, we basically had a review of ESY. Ms. Morell reviewed the program, saying that despite some hiccups, most of the program went well. It was good attendance, considering. Pushing services were also provided as needed to the literacy summer program, which was offered in the district, with services provided at the program site closest to the child's homeschool. As usual, the high school and middle school programs suffered much lower attendance. Dr., I'm not sure if it's Dr. Holt. Dr. Holt added that this is the 30th of our summer literacy program, full-day program, but with no source of funding going forward, it is likely this will be the final year of the program. Although the WED will continue to do what it can with what we have. We continue to cooperate with the Annenberg Center at Brown University, have submitted our data for analysis, hope to receive that report within the next month or so. Ms. Morell added the WED has been using guiding documents from RIDE for determining which students with IEPs would qualify for ESY, and the question was being discussed at all IEP meetings and IEP reviews. Those decisions are, as usual, data-driven. I made my usual pitch as the acting chair to find a new chair, because our bylaws do provide the new chair should have a child matriculating in the WED with an IEP, and I no longer do. My child has graduated from college at this point. I offered training and assistance to the new chair and continue to offer that assistance. Under New Business, we went to the opening of the new schools for the new school year '23-'24. Dr. McGee said, as usual, there were mixed reviews regarding the opening of schools. The high school opening was particularly difficult, based on the actions of those outside of the district that we're all aware of. The district still suffers from staffing shortages, and that challenge continues to grow across the state. Ms. Morell advised the district had been busy updating all our FBA and FBA forms and practices. All emergency plans for students who may need assistance in case of an emergency have been developed and shared out with the WED leadership and relevant staff. In particular, Ms. Morell and Mr. Notorianni, case managers are in the process of reaching out to families to provide their contact information, as well as contact information for all service providers and classroom staff who'll be working with their children. Ms. Morell reiterated Dr. McGee's concern about staffing shortages, especially for one-to-ones and classroom TAs. For those who might be interested, RIDE maintains on its website all openings in the state. The staffing shortage is a challenge, particularly challenging for most of our students. For announcements, information, and concerns, Superintendent advised that he would be announcing two new school leaders at our next school committee meeting, which you've just learned. Ms. Rickard is the new director of the Black Tech, and Mr. Ernest is the new principal at the high school. There'll be more changes in administration at the high school, but it will be for the good in the long run. We are also in search of a new band director. Special occasion director reported that RIDE's website lists available TA courses, and some of them are free. Many are booked through April, but most of those graduates are being sent there, soon to be graduates, are being sent there by districts to whom they've already made a commitment to go to work. We still offer the certification test to our early childhood students at the vocational school, but many cannot work due to their college schedules. But we ask them, if they're willing to work even part-time a few days a week, please reach out to the WED. We'd be happy to talk to you about trying to work out a schedule. RIDE has been sending PD offerings to our teachers and LEAs. There are plans to revise the alternate assessment criteria. There is PD being offered on this, and for our CIB teachers and data collection for ID students. Regarding our district's participation in the SET program, Kelly Gerard and Maria Galata were invited to present on the program at the next state director's meeting on 10/20. That's a program that they've been involved with dating back to, oh my God, Janet, I'm having a moment. Janet, I can't think of her last name.
Ms. Sullivan?
Sullivan, thank you. That wasn't expected to be a lot of work, but became an awful lot of work. But they've essentially risen to the level of leaders in this program and senior members of the program. It's now a wonderful program, and they're very happy to be collaborating with them, and they've also seen, as a result of some of the things they've learned and done, a lot of collaboration within the district and curriculum development and sharing between and among the teachers. Unfortunately, Kelly will be unable to speak at the director's meeting, but Maria Galata will be there to represent the WED. School Committee Liaison, that's me, I updated on certain events that were occurring at RIDE Pin, including a transition for early intervention to pre-K, a bullying and harassment of students with disabilities program, and introduction to CEDR programs on a more local level. I advised about this school committee meeting, the curriculum subcommittee meeting next Tuesday, the policy subcommittee meeting the Thursday thereafter, and the next CILAC meeting, which is on November 2nd, 6:00 PM, and it's virtual. Chairman Borger attended the meeting and asked if CILAC information was being shared with all families at IEP meetings, and Ms. Morell confirmed that it was, and I believe that question arose out of the very small attendance we've been having at CILAC meetings. We've had as many as 20 meetings last year. This year, the first meeting of the year, we only had 10, and I'll be frank, two of them were teachers who were also staff members, parents who are also staff members. There were no other parents there who were not staff members, which is disappointing. The meeting adjourned at 6:47 PM, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Notorianni to give us an update on the facility safety and security meeting that we had today, which was unusually long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had a meeting today, and the first topic was safety and security. We had an update on the police contract MOA and the status of that discussion. We had an update from Dr. McGee regarding Alice Training and where we were in the district with that. We had a discussion on safety and security upgrades pertaining to window tinting, radios, repeaters here at the middle school, middle school camera wiring, and access for the Windsocket Police Department in case of an emergency if they need to get to our security cameras. In addition to that, we covered facilities projects, such as the high school mural, the AED NARCAN audit, which has been completed, and tonight you approved under the purchases for the installation of all new AEDs across the district, all with NARCAN. We talked about the lighting upgrade at the high school Career Tech in Savoy, not to be confused with this lighting project. We talked about the HVAC control repairs that were approved and are going to start in a couple of weeks here at Hamlet and Villanova, which will give our staff the ability to control the temperature in their rooms to a limited degree. We talked about science lab updates, which you approved under purchases. We talked about facilities equity initiative between now and the end of the school year, and the upgrades to the high school gym locker rooms, and upgrades at Harrison Pothier. We talked about briefly an update on the high school auditorium project. We talked about the furniture replacement at the high school, which will occur by the end of the calendar year. We talked about the soil samples that came back over at the Globe Park School, where the national where the National Guard building is located, along with the oil tank removal at the Pothier Citizens Campus. We also had a discussion around transportation with Durham School Services, along with a brief discussion on the electric bus that we purchased at the Career Tech Center, and future plans to look and study the traffic flow at the high school Career Tech Center, along with the Pothier Citizens Campus. And that concludes the overview of the meeting, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Any questions for him? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Facility Safety and Security Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll stick with you, Mr. Notorianni, for your Technology and Facilities Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this evening, you have an update in front of you. It's Consolidated Technology Facilities Update. As of today, we have 46 overall technology work orders in our system, of which 38 are technology related to hardware and networks and Internet, which our technicians are working on as fast as they can to resolve these issues. We are currently working on the middle school television installation at Villanova Middle School. We've already finished it here at Hamlet, which are the display TVs you see here in the cafeteria. We are concluding the Wensocket High School and Career Tech Center Student Chromebook Distribution, which I'd like to thank Mr. Ernest, who took the lead at the high school. And he really did, I think, a great job working with the staff to pass out the Chromebooks with the tech staff. I think as of last week, we were at about 90% in terms of distribution. And I think this week, they closed the gap in that last 10%, but I don't have an accurate number. I'll know towards the end of the week. But they've done an excellent, the administration, or actually, the new administration of the high school's done an excellent job with that. Cybersecurity upgrades are currently in progress. The middle school camera wiring upgrades are finishing up this evening, tomorrow evening. Matter of fact, there was a wiring person in here earlier. Our technology data staff currently have eight work orders in the system. They are finalizing the October 1st snapshot report for RIDE, which will allow Dr. McGee to present the numbers, I think, at the next meeting, if that's the committee's wish. But we should have some enrollment numbers at the end of the month. They also continue to provide support for the start of the school year, because there are other RIDE reports other than the snapshot that's the bigger one. The projects that they're working on is the currently security monitors at the elementary schools in terms of tying the system in, the data piece and how it records. I have two, I have an error on here that shouldn't be student Chromebooks. That's a repeat. They, the data staff are currently working, I think, Ms. Kitchen, about the FOB and ID onboarding process. HR is now taking over the lead, which is something we've always wanted to do here in the district. So, just in the short time that she has been here, we've already got a new system in place, and it's working, it's efficient. It's very efficient. All new staff, new community partners, anyone that steps foot in the district that receives a FOB and ID now pass through HR. And they have an appointment system, so it's working out quite well in working with the tech department. So, thank you. We're also working currently with Dr. Holt and some of the other administrators. We got in the behavior data and configuring and tracking that in Skyward, which is something new we've not entertained doing up until this school year. So, there's some good work around that. And then, lastly, a new initiative, again, with the new high school administration and Career Tech Administration. We now, for the first time, are setting up a system where we have specific data elements that are key to our state reporting, that affect our status with the state. We now have different individuals in the administrative team there that appoint people. So, when we have reporting such as graduation data or retentions or attendance or discipline, there is an individual now assigned that the data staff at McPhee can work directly with in terms of making sure that the data is accurate and timely with the state, which is, I think, one area that we've needed some improvement on in the last few years, or at least over at the high school. Moving on to registration, the things are starting to slow down there. I don't have an exact count, but I believe our kindergarten numbers are slightly up. We will talk about that, or Dr. McGee will talk about that later in the month. Facilities Constodial Services, we've had some great success in hiring lunch lines and crossing guides. Again, thanks to Ms. Kitchen and HR. They've done a really great job of finding people. We are going to have, for the first time, custodial stub interviews next week, which we haven't had subs in about two years. So, again, thank you for finding some candidates. It's nice to have some subs versus just having to pay overtime. As of today, we have 153 work orders in the system, and we're making progress. I hope that by the end of November, we'll be down to a one-month response time, which is better than several months behind schedule if everything stays on course. The Facilities Department's working on the control replacement for the WAC Tech fire doors. They're installing whiteboards at the high school. They're finishing off with the punch lift at the new Transpro classroom at the high school. It's actually a project we're very proud of in Facilities. If you had a chance to stop by, our Facility staff did a really great job with transforming that room. We will be installing playground mulch, the ADA mulch. We'll be going to all the playgrounds throughout the fall here. And we're working on district-wide signage for both parking, no smoking in all the buildings, and then they're doing winter prep. And then the last thing is, for the current school year, we've, we're now enforcing the policy, COVID's over with. We're now enforcing, or we're strictly enforcing, the transportation policy. We received approximately 100 transportation waiver requests coming in. If we can accommodate individuals, we do. If there's a particular special circumstance, otherwise, we're adhering to the policy, as the Subcommittee heard this afternoon. And I allude to it in the report earlier. Transportation, there are some concerns in terms of the late of the buses in the afternoons. And there is nothing for safety and security. So, that concludes my report.
Mr. Notorianni, can you explain what's the difference between mulch and ADA mulch? Since you went out of your way to say that.
I think the ADA mulch is more expensive. And the ADA mulch, I believe, is, according to the vendor, the ADA mulch has been accepted in the state of Massachusetts as more easily... Apparently, you can traverse over the ADA mulch better than normal mulch. I'm not quite sure. It looks the same to me.
So, you're saying you haven't tested it to make sure?
I have not tested it to make sure myself, no. I have not.
Okay, very well. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Notorianni? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Technologies and Facilities Report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into unfinished business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the field trip and travel policy for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Do we have any other comments, discussion items on this?
I think so.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. At our last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion with regard, regards to RIDE seeking, I guess, Rise Mayoral Academy seeking to remove the cap on the number of Wensocket students being able to attend RIDE. And we had decided that we would have a letter prepared to send RIDE regarding our, basically, displeasure against, and we don't want that cap removed because of the financial impact, which would cost us, cause the district some 900, may cost us $950,000 approximate if we lose state funding. Is there any, do we want to, what do we want to do? Do we want to read the letter, which is quite lengthy? Are we all satisfied with the letter expressing what we want to say to RIDE?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Kapiskas?
The letter was prepared and drafted by me, reviewed and altered appropriately by legal counsel, and I believe it was circulated to everyone as an attachment to the agenda, and then as a separate email. So, I think we've all had an opportunity to read it. Unless anybody has questions or comments, it looked good to me, and we will all be asked to sign it if we're in agreement to do so.
I agree. Anyone?
I'm in agreement.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
In addition, we had discussed having a resolution... Yes, Vice Chair Burke?
That the discussion and approval, do we have to do, someone second that?
I agree, but first.
Do we have to?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion.
Motion to discuss and approve?
Yes.
I'll second it. Second, okay.
Oh, we've got three seconds.
We're good.
Okay.
And we voted, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
I have approved.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Thank you very much.
He catches things that we don't.
Thank you. Next, next, in addition, we decided that we would have a resolution prepared by legal counsel regarding the financial impact on the application of Rise Preparatory Mayoral Academy. So, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Wensocket School Committee Resolution regarding the fiscal impact on the application of Rise Preparatory Mayoral Academy to increase seats for students from the Wensocket Education Department. This resolution has been circulated to all of us. Vice Chair Burke?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Costa, this is not a good evening. There's been issues. Do we, is there anything else we need to do with the resolution? Any changes?
Can you read that?
Mr. Chair, if you want it read, we can read it. It's up to you. But there's one thing in particular I wanted to make sure I mentioned. Rhode Island General Law 16-77.4-3, which deals with the expansion of charters or the development of new charters, talks about, "In considering a proposed charter or an amendment to a charter for expansion," which is what this is, "the council in elementary and secondary education shall place substantial weight on the fiscal impact on the city or town, programic content, excuse me, programic impact on the sending school district, and educational impact on the students in the district to ensure that the proposal is economically prudent for the city or town and academically prudent for the proposed sending district and all of the students in the sending district." In light of this fact, that's why I find it particularly concerning that the, there's not anybody that, in the district, that's specifically charged with looking for these potential changes to the charters that exist within the school, which really, it's Rise Beacon and founders at this point. I think that perhaps the district needs to think about having a point person who's going to be checking the council in elementary and secondary education to make sure that there's nothing pending regarding these particular schools. I found this one quite by happenstance, looking through the Commissioner's weekly report, and went to look and realized what it was about. And it was only then that I learned, after speaking to Mr. Perea, that there'd been a previous expansion that had been granted with Regent Elementary and High School that I was completely unaware of in this previous January. It seems to me that, personally, I think that there should be a requirement that they reach out for this information, but there is nothing on the statute that requires them to do so. As a result, the onus is on us. And I think the district needs to think about appointing a point person, whoever that would be among the administration, to be watching the council's agenda to make sure that we have the opportunity to speak on these, should they come into being. That's just a suggestion in addition to the resolution.
That's, that's well taken. I think that should happen. I think we should read the reso, Mrs. Kapiskas, do you want to read it?
I can.
While you're at it? You'll read it or I'll read it?
I'm not sure that I...
I think we should read it.
Here it is. Here's a copy.
Okay, I don't know where I have mine. Thank you. Resolution of the Wensocket School Committee concerning the proposed lifting of cap on the percentage of Wensocket students attending the flagship school of Rise Prep Mayoral Academy. Whereas on June 6, 2023, Rise Prep Mayoral Academy, Rise Prep, a mayoral academy is defined under Rhode Island General Law 16-77.2-1, submitted to the Rhode Island Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, a proposal to expand the seats available to Wensocket students at its flagship school located at 30 Cumberland Street in Wensocket, Rhode Island. Whereas this expansion would be through lifting the current cap on the percentage of students from Wensocket were permitted to enroll. Whereas the reason given by Rise Prep for the proposal is that the approximately 60 seats currently reserved for students from Barville and North Smithfield are remaining unfilled, causing Rise Prep such fiscal distress that it may be forced to engage in layoffs and other cost-saving measures. Whereas Rise Prep, the Rise Prep proposal, if recommended by the Commissioner and approved by the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education, will cause direct financial harm to the Wensocket Education Department and its students in two ways. One, loss of annual revenue in the amount of approximately $870,000 in state aid. And two, an increase in annual expenditures in the aggregate amount of $75,300 to be paid to Rise Prep in tuition for the approximately additional 60 Wensocket students[1695.16]